Good evening. I'd like to call this Tuesday, April 18th, 2017, meeting of Middletown City Council order. If you please stand and join me in a momentation and the pledge allegiance to the flag.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Skank, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bronston here. Mr. Bohannon.
Here.
Mr. Moon.
Here.
Mr. Picard.
Here.
Mayor Mulligan.
Here. All right, our first item this evening is a special presentation for us. Our clerk has received her Master Municipal Clerk designation. Congratulations, Amy, on that achievement. Next thing we have, Ms. Janice Bates here to present your certificate.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, city staff, and members of the public. My name is Janice Bates, and I'm the Clerk of Council for the City of Tipton City and a current member of the Board of Directors for the Ohio Municipal Clerks Association. The OMCA is the State of Ohio Municipal Clerks Association that is also affiliated with the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, and I am here this evening to make a very special presentation to a member of the City of Middletown staff. IIMC was founded in 1947 and is a professional association with more than 10,000 members in the U.S., Canada, and 15 other countries. Its primary goal was to actively promote the continuing education and professional development of municipal clerks through extensive education programs, certification, publications, networking, annual conferences, and research. IIMC also engages in municipal research administration, enhances critical professional skill development, and fosters a spirit of mutual assistance and good fellowship among municipal clerks around the globe. The Master Municipal Clerk or the MMC program is an advanced continuing education program that prepares participants to perform complex municipal duties. The program has an extensive and rigorous educational component and a professional contribution component. The MMC applicant must demonstrate they have actively pursued a variety of educational and professional development activities. To earn the MMC designation, a clerk must attend extensive education programs and also requires pertinent experience within the municipality. The program prepares participants to meet the challenges of the complex role of the municipal clerk by providing them with quality educations, programs, and partnership with 47 institutions of higher learning. It is with great pleasure that I stand before you tonight to officially present to your clerk, Amy Skank, with her Master Municipal Clerk designation. After a long journey of years and many hours of seminars, conferences, and institute sessions, she has reached this pinnacle, an achievement that very few clerks have been able to accomplish. Out of 10,000 IIMC members, she is only one of 3,500 members worldwide to have obtained this certification. And while here in Ohio, she is only one of 42 that has the MMC designation. So that is something to be very proud of. Thank you. I've had the privilege of knowing Amy for several years, and I know firsthand that she has been dedicated to this city and she has worked very hard to do the best job possible for the residents of Middletown. She will continue to do a great job for Middletown, and I am honored to be here tonight on the behalf of the Ohio Municipal Clerks Association and to make this presentation, and I'm even more honored to call her my friend. Congratulations, Amy.
Thank you.
On this milestone and pinnacle in your career. You're welcome. Congratulations.
Well, I was going to try to make this surprise, but I learned early on, probably Betsy taught me this, you can't pull too many surprises over on the clerk because they know everything that's going on in town. But, well, we tried, so it's a thought that counts. But no, certainly Amy's achievement and certification is a real testament to her dedication to the city and to her position and helping us as council members, so that's very much appreciated. Certainly, a lot of stuff to keep track of, you know, with five different bosses doing different things, keep us all going in different directions, sometimes trying to get in the same direction. But no, it's certainly a great designation and certainly, I think, evident and illustrative of the dedication she has for the city as well as many city employees have for working here in Middletown. So on behalf of council and me personally, I have this proclamation to present, recognizing the Amy Skank Master Municipal Clerk Day here in the City of Middletown. Whereas the office of municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, providing professional link between the citizens, local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, province, county, and international professional organizations, and whereas Middletown's Clerk of Council, Amy Skank, earned her certified municipal clerk, CMC designation, through the International Institute of Municipal Clerks in the year of 2012, and actively followed up by engaging in the demanding Master Municipal Clerk course from the IIMC, the highest level of professional development in the continuing education process, to enhance her professional development. In addition to her significant contributions in local government, her community, and state, we take immense pride in Amy's educational accomplishments and achievements in her role as Clerk of Council. Now therefore, I, Lawrence Mulligan, by the powers vested in me as Mayor of the City of Middletown, County of Butler, Warren, State of Ohio, do hereby proclaim this day, April 18th, 2017, as Amy Skank Master Municipal Clerk Day in the City of Middletown. Congratulations, Amy.
Of course, I left my paper on the desk.
You could wing it.
First off, I want to thank city council and city manager and former city council for allowing me the opportunity to participate in this advanced professional development. I want to thank my family and friends. I would be nothing without your support and your encouragement. I want to thank Janice Bates and the OMCA for making time to come tonight and to make this evening special and to mark this milestone in my career. And I want to thank Betsy Parr and Betty Arthur for the legacy of service to the City of Middletown and to the city council.
Thank you, Amy. Let's see, moving on to our reports, I'd like to invite Julie Joyce Smith with the Butler County Auditor's Office. Good evening. Thanks for joining us this evening.
I'd like to follow.
Oh, wow.
Come on now, Julie.
Well, I thank you for allowing me to speak in our quarterly outreach. I only had one item on the list tonight, and it was to discuss our triennial update. And then this morning, when I got in, I found that I had a voicemail from Mayor Mulligan asking me to talk about valuation and the history from the City of Middletown, perhaps over the last 10 years. So that actually tied in pretty nicely with my triennial update pitch. What it is, just to give everybody an idea, in the auditor's office, we are tasked with appraising all of the properties in the county once every six years. It's called a six-annual review. That is when we have our feet on the street and our guys in the vans, and they're driving around, and they're physically looking at properties. They're looking for additions, deletions, improvements to the property, and just to be able to generally appraise them. It's a physical inspection, and we have to give every property at least two passes. One, we can do at a desktop; the other one has to be physically. We do this once every six years, and the last time we did it was for the 14 tax-year payable 15, and we will not do it again until tax year 2020. You'll notice I use tax year a lot when I talk, and that's because for our purposes in the auditor's office, we appraise everything one year behind. So currently, the bills that just got paid in February of 17 are actually for a lien date of January 1, 16. So I try to use tax year, and then I will try to follow that up payable, so you all can follow my logic because it gets a little loopy. So we are, Butler County is scheduled to have its next reappraisal, which is just a market analysis, and that will be for the 17 tax-year pay 18. Our appraisal staff is very busy right now reviewing market data, sales analysis. They're doing a lot of number crunching right now. We review the sales from '14, '15, and '16, and those are the only sales that we review for this period for the 17 tax year, and we weight them appropriately with the most recent sale having the heaviest weight. So what they'll do at the end is they'll do an analysis, they'll look at neighborhoods, and they'll say this neighborhood here is going to get an increase of 3 percent, this one's going to get a reduction of 5, this one's staying the same. When I use the term neighborhood, you can think of your neighborhood where you live, and that, for the most part, will describe how we quantify things. But if, for example, you live in an older 50s-built neighborhood and right across the street are brand-new homes built in the 2010 era, we're not going to appraise them together in a neighborhood, we're going to separate them so that the sales from each group only are appropriate to the sales of like properties. You have to keep in mind, if we could physically reappraise every property individually, we would be on the button, but we can't, so we do mass appraisal, and we're shooting for fair and consistency. So that's the background, that's where we're going with our office. And then, in retrospect, looking at the values, and what I did is I tried to provide you an apples-to-apples comparison, keeping the agricultural, residential, industrial, commercial bucket separate by year, so you can read down, and then if you flip over, the remaining information is on the back. And then towards the right-hand side, I did a, just a real rough percentage of change from the previous year, and then I did a, I quantified the change from 2016 comparative to 2007, so you can see the value loss across the board. I did think it was ironic that the Butler and Warren County numbers were so similar. So it leads me to believe that the Warren County side and the Butler side are marrying some very similar items. I also included for your review are the rates, which I know have been a hot topic here in the last six months, year, for Middletown residents. I included the gross and the effective class 1, which is what that shorthand means, which would apply to the agricultural and residential, and then the effective class 2, which applies to industrial, commercial. And then the gross rate actually would apply down there towards the end to the personal tangible public utility. Those are, at this point, while public utility has been phased out in the State of Ohio, we still do carry values for telecommunications companies, railroads, things of that nature. They get billed at the gross rate, so that's why I provided all three. You can kind of see the history of the rate fluctuations, pointing out things, 2014 took a big bump overall, the school bond issue. Prior to that, back in 2010, the schools also had a substitute levy. I believe in 2010 was when the senior citizens levy came on, so you see some small fluctuations in rate that way. But the rest of the fluctuations, as Mr. Atkins I saw has been educating folks here in the news, is due to what is called reduction factors. Reduction factors are, is a tool in the State of Ohio's toolbox, and it's used in times of prosperity when values are on a constant uptick to protect the taxpayer from overpaying. Because levies, when you vote on them, let's say you vote on a 2-mil levy, you're voting on a value specific to that levy. It will not exceed that value. If values decline, which we've seen in the past few years, the rate, if it's been reduced over time, can come back up, but never to exceed that original maximum that was voted on. So reduction factors in times of prosperity protect the taxpayer. What we have found since 2008, that since we started to see rates fall and then rise again, is that the reduction factors are used to help the entity who passed the levy in the first place get as close to the dollar amount as they can without exceeding the levied amount, the voted amount that the voters approved. So they're a percentage tool used by the State of Ohio to adjust that, and what Middletown has seen over the last 10 years is just reduction factors being applied and rates coming up, especially on longstanding levies that have been around for a while who may have reduced down over time. So that's kind of the long and the short of it. Have any specific questions?
I just wanted a point of clarification, please.
Sure.
Thank you for coming. When you talk about the reduction factors, and, you know, we commonly see $100,000 home will pay this a year, you know, pick an amount, or a $200,000 home will pay that a year. Are you saying that's just a snapshot in that moment, and in future years, it could change?
Exactly. Very much so. So when we do the $100,000 home, we use the effective rates, not the gross rate typically, and we also try not to factor in any owner occupancy. We try to give everybody kind of a fair shake and to compare apples to apples, so that kind of thing.
All right, do you have a question, too?
Right, good. Just to clarify, let's say that we have a levy that passes, and it's to generate $2 million in a given year, and that's, let's say it passes in 2014, so it's going to generate $2 million, that's based, so then you look at the values of all the houses in Middletown, and you determine how much each house must pay in order to generate $2 million, correct?
Well, no. That's for school bonds. That's how that...
That's fine, let's just use that.
Okay.
Okay. So, school bond is supposed to generate $2 million. You look at the values of 2014, you say, to generate $2 million, you have to tax the properties at this rate.
Correct.
So then, let's say that in 2016, the values of the properties in Middletown have dropped by 10 percent. So in order to generate the 2 million, you actually have to tax the properties more, correct?
That is true in the case of a fixed-sum levy, such as school bond issues, I think bricks and mortar, things where they have a debt attached to it. The levy amount that you see on the ballot is merely a placeholder. It's going to adjust to be whatever it needs to be to generate that $2 million. Most of the levies that the city has are fixed rate, meaning you'll never exceed 2 mils. So let's say the 2 mils is going to generate $2 million, and we give you the estimate, we provide the estimate, everyone goes to the ballot and they approve it, and then our values drop because in that time period, while people are voting, we're getting our abstract approved, and we can't use those numbers until the state tells us it's okay to use them. So a lot of times, what's happened is you've gone to the ballot, you've gotten it approved, 2 mils is going to generate $2 million based on this value. Values fall. Coming out of the chute now, 2 mils is only going to generate 1.5 million. That is now your new maximum, and you'll never exceed that because you would have to go over the 2 mils to get back to 2. So that's where fixed-sum, fixed-mil, or, I'm sorry, fixed-sum, fixed-millage come into play, and I don't believe that everyone fully understands that in large part.
Right, I think most people don't understand the first example.
Exactly.
Where you pass the bond levy, and $100,000 house was going to pay, I don't know, $340, $340 a year, but now that house is paying $560 a year because the reduced value of all the properties, correct?
That is correct, and that's one of our biggest complaints every year when the bills come out. Nobody approved anything. There were no new levies. How in the world could my taxes gone up? Well, values adjusted down across the board, and so the fixed-sum levies had to come up, meaning mostly school bond issues.
Thank you.
How is that different from, say, the senior citizen levy?
Senior citizen levy is a fixed-millage. So that, is it 1 mil? It's, it can go down, but it will never go up over the 1 mil. So whatever the estimate provided five years ago, whatever that maximum was, basically that maximum continued to fall with the declining values until growth is shown. So if in that five-year window, values start to come up, that's the new maximum. So it's kind of like shooting on a moving target, and it's unfortunate for the entity because the entity, let's say, needs $2 million a year to meet their debt obligations and all their, and all their programs. But if the values fall, and it's only ever going to generate 1.5, then they're operating at a deficit from the start, and it's really unfortunate. The State of Ohio did not design their levy law to work on a declining value. It was always projected to go up. It's created some major issues throughout the State of Ohio.
So demolishing inhabitable houses that had a value at some point in time and just turning it into grass, that causes other people's taxes to go up as well because there's not as many properties paying into the...
That's correct, especially if you don't have the incoming new construction to offset it. In the old days, when we would tear a building down, you probably built three to replace it, and we're seeing that Hamilton as well. So yes, the demolition, and demolition can cause especially a short-term loss. Hopefully, your economic development is moving you forward, and you're going to have long-term gain, but takes a while to get there.
Keep in mind, though, during the recession and during the foreclosure crisis, those people were not paying those taxes. Those buildings were there, they were vacant, they were in foreclosure. Those taxes, even though the building was worth $40,000, $50,000, those were not being paid. We were not getting the benefit of those at the time.
And I'd argue they may have been worth $40,000, $50,000, too. The value could have been much, much lower at that time, too.
Well, and to add on to that dilemma, when they, when rates are set for the school bond issues, that delinquency is calculated into it. So it takes, they take that into the consideration, and if you have an excessively high delinquency rate, the rest of the folks in town who are paying their bills are going to pay more as a result of it. So it's a domino effect.
What are the options to kind of reverse the trend, other than not renewing levies or...
I can cover some of that. I've got that all in my city manager report, so I can go into more detail.
I was going to say, I left my magic eight ball back in the office.
I have mine.
Our housing study will tell it all, so. Okay. Anything else for Ms. Smith? All right, well, thanks again for coming down for the update. Certainly appreciate hearing from the auditor's office.
Thank you, and I appreciate the questions, so, thank you.
All right, and with that, I'd like to invite Jeff Michelle. I don't see Jason out in the audience, but we have Arbor Day and Earth Day coming up.
I won't read this one all the way because Jeff knows all, and plus it's in small type, too, because we get longer and longer and more and more. That's right, whereas. Now, the work that goes on here with Keep Middletown Beautiful is really great, especially this spring time of the year. Earth Day, I participated in the cleanup at Old South Park for years and years, and have been across some of the different things across the city, and really admire the work that Keep Middletown Beautiful does. They also involved in the great Miami River cleanup and lots of other projects, the bright spots around town. So it really helps improve the quality of life around Middletown. Certainly appreciate the work you do and your team does every year, and I think we're going to have another great turnout this year. So I'll just read, let's see, there was one I thought I picked out here to read. Where is the trees? Well, that's Arbor Day. I'll do that, I'll do that. Okay, well, you just want to hear me say, now, therefore, I'm Mayor Lawrence Mulligan, Mayor of City of Middletown. Well, I do have to proclaim, April 28th is Arbor Day here in the City of Middletown, and urge all residents to support and protect our mature, nurture our trees and urban forest, not just for the beauty they provide, but for the benefits they give our residents and our community. So keep up the good work, Jeff, and look forward to hearing and seeing you out and about. Well, I want you to talk a little bit about what you've got going on.
Thank you very much.
All right, sure.
Thank you very much for having me here this evening. Nice to see a bunch of you, because I haven't seen a long time here, so, nice to see you guys. I would like to touch on Earth Day. In the 12 years I've been working on the board and going and seeing from seven people to several hundred people working with the city, getting even closer, working with Doug hand-in-hand, and making available all the resources that we have in the city, we've got a really nice program this year. So I'm very proud of that, and I'm very proud of what our group has been able to put together. As of last week, we had confirmed over 250 people will be attending our event. Probably we'll get another 50 to 100 that'll show up the day of the event. So we're going to have a very nice day at the city building this Saturday from 8 until noon. So if anybody knows how to work the weather, I'd like you to keep the rain off until about 1:30. Other than that, we'll work throughout the town. We've got all the parks targeted, all the right-of-ways where it's safe to work for people to pick up trash. We're going to paint in parks. We're going to paint a specific project throughout the town. We'll dedicate a lot of time downtown, working on the main drag and the streets that come on each side of that. Main Street, Mr. Mary had brought that up, that Old South works in that park and does a lot of stuff. So we're trying to reach out to all the different parts of town and clean up, paint, refresh them. They need it once a year, and there's no way that the city and a few park employees can keep it up. So it's a nice shot in the arm, and I think the best part is I've got a lot of notes this year because of the water bill, and it's a mom reaching out with her family, and they want to do the project together. So I think that's really good. You're getting out to the community and not just the AK Steels, the Sun Cokes and all. You're getting down to the grassroots, and I think that's most important. So thank you again for what you've done. I appreciate it. I haven't seen any of your names on the list yet. Show up that day. So if you would like to come out and join us, please.
It's a great t-shirt, right?
I'll get you a t-shirt. I know somebody. And a hot dog, I'll feed you, too, all right? So come on out, 8 to noon, we're going to work, 11:30 to 1:00. We'll feed people at the city building. We would like to put a tree in, 11:30 at the city building for Arbor Day. And just thank everybody for a few minutes, and then dive in to eat, and we'll call it a day. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate your work, Jeff.
Appreciate it.
All right. With that, Mr. Atkins, we can move on to city manager reports.
Yes, Your Honor, I've got several things on this evening's reports. First off, I'd like to start with two police promotions and why I enjoy doing all of the fire and police motions and introducing everybody to council. These two guys are probably, I'm a little more close to than some of the others, as I started as prosecutor in 2005. These two guys were out on the street in narcotics, making the cases that I was trying and learning to be a prosecutor on, so I became very close friends with both of them, and I'm delighted today to have them here for their promotions. I'll invite Lieutenant Cunningham up to make the introductions and bring our special guests up.
Sam and Dave, if you'd like to step forward. On behalf of Chief Rodney Mearsball, who's away on training, I want to introduce Sam Allen and Dave Burke as our two new promotions. Sam was hired in 1998 as patrol officer. He's worked various functions in the department, narcotics, task force, patrol. He's a member of the SWAT team. He's currently a detective in the detective section, and he is a great asset to the department. I'd like to give you, Sam Allen, to introduce you to the city council and the community, and Sam would like to speak a, say a few words.
Yeah, thank you. Obviously, I'm very excited about this. October this year will be 19 years I've been employed by the police department. So I want to say thank you to Mr. Atkins, to Mayor Mulligan, to the other city council members, to Chief Mearsball, who's not here, and then to my family. My father and mother are here, both of my sisters and my brother-in-law, two of my nephews, my in-laws are here, and then mostly, I want to say thank you to my wife, Jody, my daughter Karen, my son Zach. They put up with me during the promotion process, which was countless hours of reading and studying that took away from them, but it was a sacrifice. I'm excited, I look forward to this. I love this community. I graduated from school here, so when I see the good things that are going on, it's exciting to me. I think the city's headed in the right direction, and I'm glad to be a part of it, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations. Dave Burke is going to be the lieutenant. He has started as a patrol officer in 1997. He was promoted to sergeant in 2006. Dave has worked multiple different jobs in the department and is a great asset. He has done an admirable job on the city's impound lot. He's a member of the SWAT team and actually the commander of the SWAT team, and is currently the patrol commander. So with that, David, he requested 10 or 15 minutes of conversation.
First of all, I'd like to thank council and Doug Atkins and also Chief Mearsball for giving me this opportunity. I'm excited about the future. We're doing some great things, and thank you for the opportunity. My family's not here because they're at soccer practice and everything else, so just thanks for the opportunity. I look forward to the future and ready to get started. Thank you.
Congratulations.
One of the nice things about having your own set of reports is I get a report on whatever I want to, and tonight I want to report on, apparently nothing. There we go. That is Reed Thomas Benton, my seventh grandchild, who came out early at 3 pounds and 14 ounces. Tiny, healthy, breathing good, doing everything. He's holding his temperature. He's doing great. They're going to keep him in the hospital until he gets up to 4 pounds, but Mom is doing good. She's home and running back and forth to the hospital, and we hope to have him out by the weekend back at home. And so it was a busy Thursday and Friday. And so, it was a busy Thursday and Friday. After that, because I'm doing double duty, I have big brother and big sister, Logan in the green shirts, too. His sister, Brooklyn, is five. They went with me to the Derrico Community Easter Egg Hunt on Saturday. I'd like to thank the fire department for their, all of their time there today, or on Saturday, rather. All kinds of kids were climbing all over our gear and having a good time. We were out with the police, and I made their Facebook post. We made the joke that Logan's in his terrible twos, and so, he's either going to be really something, or he'll end up behind those bars. I'm not sure which right now. Thank you also to Holly Owens. She actually started the Easter Egg Hunt by blowing the siren on the police car. It was a great night, we had, or a great afternoon. We had lots of people there. Vice Mayor Bronson and I had a good time there, and simply fun day. I was also, after three days of watching a two and a five-year-old, I know now why you don't do this in your 50s. They wear you out. So, they're back home with their mom, thankfully, and I enjoyed the time. Moving on, Julie Joyce Smith had talked about the property tax rates. I'm also going to talk about that a little bit. It's been in the paper recently. It's also been part of the discussion with the renewal of the senior citizen levy, and I also wanted to give a brief discussion on that this evening. I won't go over this. Julie did a pretty good job of that, how levies work. I won't go into the detail of that, but I will move on and show you that between 2011 and 2015, this is what happened with the property values in the city of Middletown. And if you look at agricultural, industrial, commercial, and other, they were up a little, down a little, but fairly flat. The big number, everything is in residential. During that four-year period, we lost fifty-eight million dollars in residential value over the four-year period, and you can see on the total, we're actually down, only down fifty-five million, which means we ate up all of that and more in our residential property values dropping. Go ahead, please. What that results in is the effective tax rate that, that we've got, which is just darn near our nominal tax rate. We're at seventy-four-point-three-zero-six mils, and you can see the distribution above in red, our effective tax rate, and I think, I didn't have the, the latest numbers that Julie had, but we were at seventy-three-point-seven. Just under that, we're la, I think that was for 15, if I remember right. When you look at other areas like Fairfield and Lakota, and again, this is using, I believe, 15 data, that even though they have more actual bond money allocated and voted for, because they have recovered faster and had more new construction, their effective tax rate has been spread out amongst that value in a way that they are not paying nearly as much as citizens in Middletown are paying for their taxes. Go ahead, please. We are not, however, the only community that has impacted this. I showed you Lakota, I showed you Fairfield. Hamilton's values actually, at that, during that same period, went down nine-point-two percent. Monroe's went down ten-point-two percent, even more than we did. So, this is not just a Middletown problem, but it is certainly a Middletown problem, and it's something we're going to have to deal with as we move forward. Go ahead, please. Again, this is an imperfect and simplified explanation. Julie and I have talked about this throughout the community. We've been to chamber meetings, we've been to Rotary, we've talked at different places, and this is a very complicated thing. There's fixed, there's moving. Property values go up, they go down, mills, and it's, it's a very hard thing to explain easily to the public how these things work. However, there are three ways that we could improve our tax rate. One would be to lower the tollage, total millage approved by the voters, actually vote to reduce our rates in some way. Number two, add significant new residential housing, and therefore, value to our housing stock. That, again, lowers the effective tax rate. The third way is to significantly upgrade a large portion of your existing stock, and that doesn't mean put a coat of paint on it. That means add a bedroom. That means finish a basement. That means new roof, things that, add a garage, things that are going to be, you know, take it from a forty thousand to a sixty thousand dollar house, and eighty thousand to a ninety or a hundred thousand dollar house. Those are the big types of things that can make swings over time in our tax rate. Go ahead, please. And this, again, makes our discussion surrounding the proposed senior citizen levy renewal and our has, handling of our housing stock as part of the new master plan especially timely. Both of these will significantly affect our future property tax rates, obviously, the special election for the senior citizens, and I'm not for it or against it, but it is one of the areas where we'll have a chance to reduce our rates. The alternative is to reduce our, our services to seniors. It's, it's two bad choices, you know? Neither one of them is attractive, but those are the choices that our voters are going to have in May. Go ahead. I will start our discussion of housing stock at the May 2nd meeting. My guess is that we will start with about a fifteen-minute workshop. I have a ton of data, about eighteen different charts that we'll have laced around the room here. We'll probably start by walking around and just looking at them, thinking about them, and then I'll have a presentation to start talking about housing at our May 2nd meeting. The numbers are absolutely staggering. The numbers I'm going to throw out at you will blow your mind, and all I'm trying to get through on May 2nd is an understanding of the problem. If I can get the community to understand the nature of the problem, why I think it's a problem, and why I think it's imperative that we start taking some action over the next ten to twenty years, to start moving our housing stock in another direction. I can tell you, as community revitalization director, I said, "We should do stuff with housing," and the first thing out of our thing, "You're going to destroy the South End. You, you don't like African-Americans, you don't like poor people, you don't like ding, 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 ding. You're an elitist, you're a racist, you're all these things," and I never got to the discussion of, "Yeah, but let me tell you what I think we should do." We never got there when I was in community revitalization. So, I'm trying to take a different tactic on this time as city manager, and the first thing is, do you understand the problem? And if I can relay this to you on May 2nd, have you say, "I understand, I don't know what you're going to do about it, but I understand the problem," that I'm going to take that out and go out in the community, and we're going to visit with the landlords in May. We're going to visit with Second Ward Community Council, the Minister Alliance. We'll take it to Rotary, and we will take that same presentation and say, "Do you understand what I'm trying to say? The problem is, do you understand why I believe this is a problem?" If I can get the community to say, "We don't know what, where you're headed, but yeah, we get it. Yeah, we've got to start thinking about what we're going to do about this. If we're ever going to have this effective tax rate go down, if we're ever going to see our property values go back up, we're going to have to make some changes." If I can get that far, then I can come back towards the end of the year and say, "This is what I would do to fix it. Now, let's go through the process again. Counsel, what do you like and dislike about what I've suggested? Landlords, what do you like and dislike? African-American community, what, or do you have concerns that I'm impacting you in a bad way? And if so, how could we, how could we tweak it in ways and change it that you would say, "I don't, I don't love this, but I could support it"? The Second Ward Community Council, again, same Rotary, again, take it out, and I don't care how long it takes, six, twelve, eighteen months, but come back to you at some point and say, "I've taken it out, we've done it, we've tweaked it, we've talked to everybody we can talk to. This is the housing policy I'm asking council to adopt, twelve to eighteen months from now, and I hope to have representatives from the landlord, the Second Ward Community Council, the Minister Alliance, the groups in town that, that are typically impacted by these types of things, and say, "We've talked to Doug, we've worked through this process, we don't love this, because this, this is not going to be something people are going to love. But we understand it, we understand why we have to take action, and we're willing to support this, this process moving forward, and I hope to have their coun, their counsel, their support when I come back to council at the end of this." But we're going to start on May 2nd. I have, if I remember right, eighteen different charts of different things, and what you're going to see as you start looking at them is when we look at where drugs are, we look at where rentals are, we look at where property values are, we look, our, people have low education levels, we look at poverty. Eighteen different variables, you're going to start seeing two or three areas that all focus in that everything in the city is going wrong in those areas. And that's what I'm trying to get a point across, is that these people are in poverty, they're not educated, they are in low-quality housing, they are surrounded by drugs, they are, are, and on, and on, and on, and on, and we should not allow that, as a city, to continue into the future. We should take some action to start doing that. So, we'll start having a pretty major discussion about that on May 2nd. Like I said, I will probably start by allowing you just to walk around and try to absorb some of it, then have a presentation after that, laying out, based on this, here's some, here's some additional data for you to consider, with the idea that by the end of that discussion, you can look at me and say, "I'm not sure where you're going, but I understand where we're at," and that's what I'm trying to get through on May 2nd. So, we'll start that then. Go ahead, please. The last thing I wanted to talk about was the sidewalk curb and gutter costs. I had sent an email out to council earlier that on ordinance 2017-19, we have a first reading tonight with a request for emergency passage on May 2nd, so that we can get that work done during the season while we're paving. This is for the, if I remember it, Rob, the complaint area, right? Is this, yes. This is not the, the normal plan. This is the area where we had received complaints. We did give you the map of where those areas were affected. You've gone through the first parts of that. When we got the, go ahead, please. When we got through this, we came back with a estimate and bid that was seven percent higher than our engineer's estimate at the time. Doesn't happen often, but it does happen. I've seen it in other cities. We charge property owners for the actual cost of the work. They do have the ability to complete this work themselves, if they want to try to get it done cheaper, or not to have us do it. I've lived in Vandelia, Fairborn, Kettering, Mason. I, every community I've been associated with, they charge the actual cost, whether it's above or below the estimated cost. You get charged for whatever it really costs us to do this work at your, at your place. There are be about thirty property owners who could be affected by this. They would be charged between one and nineteen percent more than the estimate that they were originally given, between ten and five-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars. Again, they have the ability to do that work themselves. The remaining seventy-seven property owners would actually be charged slightly less than we had did on the estimate, but again, the, the danger in not doing this and not moving forward on May 2nd is that we won't be able to pave those roads. We want to be able to do everything, get that entire section done in each area. We want to make sure that we're paving and cleaning that all up at one time. We are going to ask for your approval on May 2nd. Go ahead, please. There is an appeal process. Once we get the work done and we get the actual bills, we will have a list of assessments. They will be published for three consecutive weeks in the newspaper, according to state law. This will happen sometimes towards the end of the year. They have the ability to object to city council within two weeks of the expiration of the publication. You then have the ability to review those and make adjustments if you choose to. Again, there is an objection process for those, those thirty property owners that could be affected. If they want to do that, pending on the balance, they could come before you and ask for some relief. But we are hoping to move forward on May 2nd. I do have Rob Nichols, our city engineer, here. We don't have any other information to give you, but we wanted to make sure that we gave you what we do have and the process that will happen moving forward. If we can't answer questions tonight, we'll, we'll try, but if we don't, we'll, I'll give them to Rob, and we'll go back and we'll get answers for you for anything left that you have. But we would like to move forward on May 2nd with council's approval. And I believe that's everything we have tonight. Is that right? Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions, Mr. Atkins?
I have a question. Do you have many appeals to the work that's been done after the work is done? Are there many complaints from the residents?
Not in my time here, mayor. In the past, have we?
I don't ever recall any.
I just wondered.
Yeah. Not in my two and a half years, I've not seen one.
Many times, though, the actual cost is less than the engineer's estimate. So, this is a unique case where it's actually higher, that we expect that the actual cost to be higher.
Mr. Atkins, if we rebid, it delays some of the road construction, is that correct?
It will, perhaps long enough that it may be a problem getting those roads all paved. I mean, we, we would like to move forward, and I realize it's a little bit, again, you do have the power on an appeal to grant relief later down the road. We would hope to move forward and get that done, though, and make sure, it's so important that we skip back, get those paving done and get those streets done.
Anything else, Mr. Atkins? All right. With that, Ms. Skank, we go to our consent agenda.
Consideration, this evening, we have the approval of the city council minutes from April the 4th, 2017, to receive and file board and commission minutes from the cemetery board of January 18th, 2017, the civil service commission of February 16th, 2017, to confirm personnel appointments of Samantha Blalock, part-time bus driver, community revitalization division of transit, Brian Brooks, part-time senior electronics technician, public works and utilities, electronics, Matthew Condo, senior electronics technician, public works and utilities, electronics, Ezel Leonard, patrol officer, public safety, police, Kevin Metz, income tax auditor, finance, taxation, David Skank, grounds technician, public works and utilities, grounds maintenance, Lindsay Schwaber, patrol officer, public safety, police, to confirm the promotional appointments of Mark Sam Allen to the position of police sergeant, public safety, police, David Burke to the position of police lieutenant, public safety, police, and Christopher Bjorkland to the position of equipment, equipment operator, public works and utilities, storm winner, maintenance, to receive and file OHS of office for David Beal, William Green, and Taylor Mann, and to proclaim April Fair Housing Month.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion for the approval of the issues and actions as listed on the consent agenda?
Second.
Second, okay. Ms. Skank, we should call the roll, please.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
All right, and our motion item, I understand we're moving item A, so we just have.
Yes, Your Honor. You had on your agenda an award to contract for the AWAS system at the Middletown Regional Airport. We were notified this afternoon that there's a potential grant out there from ODOT that may cover part or all of that cost, and with that in mind, we literally have not had a chance to investigate it. I would ask that this be tabled until the next meeting. Give us a chance to go ahead and review that grant and make sure that we are, that we are eligible or not eligible for it.
Very good. All right, and so we have one motion item.
To approve the purchase of a Ford Explorer from Lebanon Ford of Lebanon, Ohio, in the amount of thirty-two-thousand-three-hundred dollars off the ODAS contract.
Ms. Atkins?
Yes, Your Honor. The 2017 budget does include a new fire command unit. We were ready to retire the old one. In addition to the thirty-two-thousand-three-hundred requested for the vehicle purchase, there will be an additional seventy-seven-hundred spent for equipment for the light bar, graphics, siren, video monitor, camera, and et cetera. There are funds available in the garage budget to cover this expenditure.
All right. Do we, any questions, Mr. Atkins? Okay. I want to entertain a motion to approve the purchase of a Ford Explorer from Lebanon Ford of Lebanon, Ohio, in the amount of thirty-two-thousand-three-hundred dollars off the ODAS contract.
I move.
Second.
Ms. Skank, we should call the roll, please.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
No.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
All right, motion carries.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Brings to our council comments. Mr. Picard?
Thank you, Mayor, of no comments.
Mr. Bohannon?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to congratulate Amy on her award and advancement, and also to Lieutenant Burke and Sergeant Allen.
All right, thank you. Mr. Moon?
Yes, I'll echo those to the officers and to Ms. Skank. I also just wanted to congratulate Major Hoffman on his retirement. I got to attend his retirement party last week. We're certainly a better community for having had him here for so many years. I also wanted to mention that the school board, as many folks know, is in the process of searching for a new superintendent. Please be involved in that process. They're having an open house on April 19 at Highview. Can't remember if it's at 6 or 7. Please come out and let the school board know what qualities you're looking for in your next superintendent. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Bronston?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. We have the upcoming NAACP banquet, and we will be honoring Kelly Cowan and Jeff Diver for our community awards, and we have one award that we're going to honor for public safety, and we will have the chiefs there, the police chief, fire chief, and we asked Van Arsdale to come back and step in with them for the work they've done over the last few years, consensus of the executive committee, which is something a little bit different than what we've done in the past. And Jeff Diver will be there Thursday night, and we'll be at the self banquet on Friday. So they'll be at the receptions banquet center for the self dinner. I think it's their 21st annual, something like that. Also, of course, congratulations to Amy and to the officers. Great job all of them are doing, and promotions are great around here. Last thing I think I have to say is the symphony. The Middletown Symphony will have their last performance on May 7 at the Finkelmann Auditorium, even though that professional team will be completing their lifespan. There's another group that's starting up, and that's the Southwest Ohio Philharmonic. So keep your eyes for them arising on the horizon. They do have their 501(c)(3), and they're ready to roll. So that ends my comments.
All right, thank you very much. I just have a couple of brief comments. One, I'd reiterate all the thanks to all our city employees, really. We had some great recognitions tonight, but I know there's a lot of work done day in, day out by many of the city employees, and it's certainly a testament to making Middletown a greater place, and certainly appreciate all their work. And two, I'd like to compliment DMI and Mallory Greenham for a great first Friday last, I guess it was last week, or anyway, early this month, since our last council meeting. Just, I mean, the weather was great, which certainly helped, but I think with the new businesses, I heard a little jealousy. It was a meeting in Hamilton, and we had, I think, 24 new businesses open over the past year, and that's about twice what they supposedly had in their downtown. So, nice to be a little bit better than Hamilton and our friendly competition, but no, it's a lot of work by, a lot of volunteers, a lot of committed folks, and certainly helping make the city a better place. So I appreciate that from everything we heard tonight to what Jeff Michelle and the Keep Middletown Beautiful Group are doing to beautify the city. A lot of great work, and certainly appreciate that. And with that, we can move on to Ms. Cohen and our legislation for this evening.
Thank you, sir. There are four items to consider this evening. Three are for second reading, the last will be for a first reading. So get started with the first matter, ordinance O-2017-16, and ordinance vacating an alley adjacent to 1131 Central Avenue.
Okay, I know we had a previous report on this. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
Any other discussion or comments? Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.